Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Before we start, we have to, I need a motion to amend the agenda as follows. We're going to move the set date for joint Wyndham Foundation meeting to executive session instead of open. And there's also an issue with the town attorney that we need to talk to in executive session along with the truck bid. So if we have a motion to do that, please.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, so now we need to, so we got, I think we adopted the agenda, so let's go on. Approval of the minutes of the 12th? There are two. That's, which one you want to do first, Town Hall or Garage?
There's actually three, aren't there?
You're right, there are three. Which one would you like to do first?
What time? There's 10 o'clock, there's 6 o'clock.
Well, there's, we start in the morning with the budget and then there's 2 at night. There's a meeting and a hearing and a meeting at night.
Okay, so let's. The budget meeting.
Um, do you want corrections first?
Yeah, any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yeah.
Down in, um, was that?
Are you doing the budget?
We're doing the 10.
The one we're supposed to do.
Budget. Special budget, 10 a.m.
Okay.
Um, just before number three. Correct Kim record's name. Yeah, K.I.A.M.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
And then right below that, articles.
Are there any other additions, corrections to the minutes? 12th at Town Hall, 10 a.m. If not, a motion to accept.
So move second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, the second one now is the public hearing on the 12th at 6 p.m. Do we have any additions or corrections to that? If there are none.
Motion to accept the minutes as provided.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of, any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes of the 12th at the Town Garage of the hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, so the next one is the real meeting that took place after that. If they're on done.
I'm making a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Kathy, second of it? Any further discussion?
Well, pretty nitpicky thought.
Okay.
I should get a capital S like everybody else. Where did I get give you a capital S? Well, I didn't get first one, but you said Polio and Sands. I'm a little ass, I shouldn't be a capital. Well, maybe I meant Sands. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, so. Motion to accept the minutes as amended? We need a?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's done. Now we're at the 16th. I mean, I don't, what's up there? I don't have it either, but it's up there.
We corrected everything already.
Oh.
The 16th is up there.
Yeah.
Can you scroll up, please? You want to go back to the top, please?
A tad smaller. There you go. Now, now we need Mike Banker flying glasses.
No way to say it. We corrected your name already.
That's why I didn't.
Right? You're on a call, right? So you can't.
I know where to do that. I didn't have my attention.
We did it there. See, real without Sands, same thing, I fixed that. Yep. And then there's one other we fixed, Mary Beth Poulter, number nine. With a capital C.
Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes of the 16th? If not, a motion to?
Paragraph 12, you can correct Al's name there again if you want to.
Okay.
And 14 too.
In 14 too? In nine and 14? 12.
Alan, what are you, what's going on with you? Am I still what?
That one's really long. His evaluation's coming up.
There's actually, um, two of that, you have two.
Missing the S both times?
Yeah.
Okay, done.
And then 14.
Maybe somebody up the order gets easier this morning.
Your name took it, it's like Wijakowski or something. All right.
Do we have any further? Need someone make a motion to accept the 16th?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, one abstention, four yeses, one abstention.
Stand.
So the last one is December 26th at the Town Hall? Which is emergency meeting that we had on a Saturday or whatever day it was.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. Day after Christmas.
I did have, I did have a mistake on there, but Al corrected it a long time ago. The version you know, I put CFO instead of THO for some reason in one of those long lists of dealing with, on the second page.
There are no further corrections.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, so we're done with the minutes. The warrants of the 16th and the third were signed and presented to the clerk, so that's done. Fred the Pussy is not coming tonight. Weather permitted, the weather was a little bad, so he, he put it off and probably won't be for another 30 days until he shows up again. Highway report. The truck bid discussion will be moved to executive session. And Danny, work schedule and the alarm comments there?
Work schedule? We get the tank that we signed contract with Innovative, had it for a little while. I gotta wait for, I ordered some rubber roofing to put underneath it to keep the water from going back to the salt shaft. So that'll be set up in the next few days. Work schedule, just working on trucks and dealing with the storms. The alarm install, you guys all saw the way they did that.
Yeah, how do we want to handle this install, Stan?
I'm talking to the owner of the, the company within the next couple of days anyway because of another project that I'm going to be involved with. So I may contact him directly tomorrow, so at least he's aware of it, so I'll, I'll get ahold of it.
Is that okay with the rest of the board or?
Well, I'd like to add to that.
Sure.
So this is the same company that we've been dealing with at the Town Hall, which we've had an alarm there that has been faulty or not operating correctly for quite a long time. And this is the kind of work they do in an installation. Are they the only people that do this?
No, no, you got, there's, there's multiples, but if you go out to bid, probably they're the ones that's going to be able to do it for the, for the cost. This was put in obviously through a contract with the building that was built, so I can't tell you how this was bid out.
I think then we even still went with them because they're, they're, they kind of combine their calls and everything in the area. But yeah, if you put this out to bid and change it, it's like changing everything that's there. The whole system now.
Well, I mean, obviously they, they created this situation, they should fix it.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm looking beyond that. I'm like, do we want to continue? And, and maybe that's part of the discussion, but your track record's not very good.
Good point.
And, and I agree with you, Alan. The problem is though, if you bring in another company and you change, it's a costly, because the equipment that's here goes away and they install their own equipment in, so there's an opt, the monthly might be the same or less or whatever, but the initial outcome, the initial, is going to charge you. They don't just take it over.
They just deal with it.
Okay, I didn't understand.
That doesn't mean you have to be with them, it's just that if you want to change the company, you gotta bite the bullet.
I didn't understand that. I thought this, this was our equipment they installed for us, not.
Oh, no, they, they supplied it.
It's all their equipment.
That makes a difference, I understand.
But I, but I, I think it's a great point, and I think Stan needs to explain to him that, you know, we're not, we're not happy campers, so to speak.
Now, has that, Bill, is that alarm, that trouble alarm that goes off down there, has that gone away since they put in the internet connection?
Yep.
So might have been something with a telephone connection or something.
What it is, is, might be another reason you want to talk to them about it. The, the kids that came on that one that we complained and they can talk about it, says your problem is you have copper wires do not work with our system. The copper wires constantly set it off. Then why do you set it up with copper wires? You know, I mean.
Well, it might, I, no, I can't ask.
He says, he said, uh, it's with, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, the copper wires interfere, that's right. It's, it's this high speed that interferes with it, because we don't have copper wires, that's what it was. We don't have copper wires in there for it. But in any case, we've always had, from the time that thing was put in there.
Yeah.
The same fiber optic, so.
How long has Stan had it on? Just a couple of years now?
A few years, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, nothing's changed.
No, it's not exactly, no, it's not. No, they, it was a bunch of blony, but anyway.
Yeah, I'll talk.
But I think the computer system, even if that's the case, the computer system's a lot less expensive, uh, because you don't have to pay for the phone line. Down here. Up there, we have the phone lines, it didn't make any difference, but it's better, it's a better way to run. But it was a pain.
Danny, do you have anything else on the highway?
I do not.
I just, yeah, I have, I have one, go ahead.
Oh, you have a sign down on Beck Bridge?
Yep. Yeah.
I see a few of them.
Yes. I've seen two. I know there's one on the Beck Bridge, I can't remember where the other one is.
Out the valley, someone named the Snowmobile sign up.
Okay.
And I still record road sign again.
Yeah, but I think there's two bridge freezes signs that are down. I can't for the life of me remember where the second one is, but I know one is on the northeast corner of the Beck Bridge. That's over the ditch. It's there, for some reason, it's been pulled out and dinged over the.
Why is the?
They did that with the other ones too, they just pulled them and threw them to the side.
Who's doing it? Is someone vandalized or is it part of the snowplow?
No, it's not the plows, no. No, someone's just having fun.
Yeah. Why is the record road sign disappearing all the time?
I know someone likes it.
Or welded.
Someone posted.
Can you put some kind of special bolts or something where they can unscrew it?
They're, they're pulling whole posts.
The whole post?
They're taking everything.
Even in the frozen ground and everything?
Yeah, they don't freeze off.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Good break.
I'm hoping that's, I think three of them now. Two this summer and one before, so hopefully they got enough now.
My gosh.
Put a drone camera on. Yeah.
Maybe they need to cut it in concrete. What was up?
Yeah. I don't know. The anchors are three feet long, it'd be driving to ground.
I know. I know how they can pull it out.
Probably latch them out to a truck.
Popple dungeon sign kept disappearing for a long time.
Oh, that was a common.
Till they were with a frame around.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know what it is about popple dungeon.
Yeah, it's just a hot sign.
So anything, anything else with the highway department? If not, Alan? Village Park discussion?
Two minor things. Met at the Village Park with Hayden Lake, the forester. We talked about, um, the idea of a couple of patch cuts up on the hill to create some diversity, some habitat, birding area, and, um, the, this, the operation of that would need a landing down off from Fire Pond Road, and, um, that landing eventually would convert into a parking area. That whole idea was good with Hayden. It would be nice if it was done with a certain piece of equipment, which is called a cut-to-length system, which means the tree hits the ground, it gets processed, and then put on a forwarder and brought down, rather than dragged down with a skidder. For a couple of reasons, the forwarders are easier on the ground as far as making ruts, they're, they're, you know, but it will still require a winter operation. Plus, the mess is left up in the woods when you cut the trees, so that you're not bringing stuff down to the landing and processing it down there, which also means it's, it's a little more away from people where you're working, so, um, that was good. We located a potential spot where the landing could be located, which becomes our parking lot, and I had Danny come up and look at it. The area we talked about, he actually initially thought he had a better spot, just up the road, until we walked into the woods and there was an anchor for a power line, a pole there, so we're back to the original spot where Hayden and I would have considered. One of the things that Hayden mentioned was, um, he's, he's a forester and he does forestry work. He's not anxious to be our public relations person, and, um, when we talked about doing some work up there once before, he got a phone call from one of the townspeople. He thought it was a little too much, the way the person came on, and it was sort of attacking him. I don't know how we deal with that, but I know who the person is. Anyway, Hayden wants to do forestry work, he doesn't want to do that kind of work for us where he has to deal with our public, so. I'm a little sensitive to the fact that any work we do there is a disturbance, and for some people, any disturbance is bad. But in order to get to the next step where we have a parking lot, a nice kiosk, and the other things that are necessary, we're gonna have to do some work. There's two contractors that he would consider for the work. One has, they both have the same piece of equipment, but the one has an excavator and would be handy for the excavator for setting up the parking lot. Both, both of those contractors have work committed for this winter, so Hayden and I may go up and mark out the area and prepare it, but more than likely the work won't happen until next winter.
Danny, is that something we can't do with an excavator to build this parking lot?
They'd get better off to let the loggers set up the landing the way, the way they want.
No, I mean, but, but then, yeah, they could set it up, but can we finish it off and?
Potentially, yeah.
Put gravel there or whatever it needs to be?
How big of an area do you think for like the landing slash parking lot? Hundred by hundred or something, right? Hundred by a hundred or?
Well, that's one of the things we need to talk about, but.
We need a drawing to see.
Well, we need, you know, how many cars do you think would go there? But if you think of.
What do you need for landing?
Well, with, part of the beauty of the forwarder system, you need a much smaller landing than you need with when you're dragging the trees out and you're processing them on the landing, but we do need room to put a truck in there to get the wood out. Turn around. Yeah. I'm guessing it's going to be quarter acre or something. It's, there's, that whole hillside has water in it, if you remember the family, I can't remember their name, but the family that gave that to the town.
Daniels?
Daniels. When they gave that to the town, originally they thought that was going to be a water supply.
Well.
Wells for the town. So that whole hillside has water, so if, if we're going to make a log landing and then eventually a parking lot, you're gonna have to clear a little bit more so that you can shape it and put up some drainage on the uphill side or around it to get it to work the way we want it to work. But I, I think, um, having a spot where, um, a school bus or, or, you know, two or three cars, half dozen cars during, I gotta believe during the, um, ferry house tour, parking in, in the village is, is premium, so I gotta think, um, quarter acre parking, parking area would be appropriate maybe? I couldn't measure that out.
Well, I think, I think probably, I think Stan's right, we need some kind of, you know, Hayden do a, do a, you know, a drawing of some things. And I think that, and I don't know who this person is and I'm not interested, but maybe the way to avoid this is, is to have, to invite the public to come and make their comments about the Village Park, or at least those individuals who might have a problem, so they're not blindsided and they can deal with it. I mean, the truth of the matter, it's, it's a town property, we can do what we want to go deal with it, within reason obviously. But, uh, maybe to avoid the, the comments, maybe we just let the public understand what's going on. Yes, Bill?
That's what we did last time, just to, just to people we're gonna go look at what we're gonna do, take everybody. Well, but it was after the last time, and it was one of the people.
That was at that meeting.
Exactly, no, but, 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 so we did answer his questions at that meeting, and he still had a problem, he still had a problem.
He did, and he, and he took it up with.
And all he asked, all he didn't have to do is say, call Bill. Call the town.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can't expect Hayden to.
Well, I don't. I don't expect it. He shouldn't have to.
No, he should not. He's a logger, he's not the town.
Right.
It's, it's, it's the select board or the town's issue.
Right.
And, you know, if it happens again, then we need to direct that individual, you know.
But I think we should just, you should do what we did before and walk through it. So everybody knows. Well, the process I have in mind is that Hayden and I will go up and flag out what we think is the appropriate size of landing, flag out the perimeter, and go up on the end of the ax, the single line of flags up to where the road would go up to the patch cuts and flag out the patch cuts. So if people want to look at just the parking lot, which will be the most visible, they can look at that, if they want to walk up and see how big the patch cuts are, that way people can look at it ahead of time. That's, that's the plan I'm prepared to carry through.
I think last time when we had the tour there was pretty effective. I mean, people came, they, they were interested, they understood what was going on, and there were some objections obviously, but, but still, they have an opportunity to object and, and maybe their objections are, I don't know.
Maybe a couple of months. When daylight permits, having a site visit.
We'll do it in spring, because, or summer, because obviously you're not doing it this year anyway, right? So we can do it probably sometime when the weather gets better.
You know, sometimes, sometimes the weather is such that a job they intended can't work and they have a little opportunity to sneak in. This is a small job, so it's not a big job, but.
Well, if they want, if it's something that's happening, you need, you need to have this meeting sooner than later before they start, so.
Correct.
You may want to consider just up, do an update in the Grafton News, update on the Village Park, so people know what's happening.
Good idea. Yeah, good idea, Kathy.
If they have questions, they can, you know, either direct it to the board or to Bill or to Al.
Yeah, I think that'd be good to put it into the Grafton News on the next edition, little article of what you want to do, and this, Kathy's right, and they can, at least they know what's going on. Anything else with the park?
No.
Okay.
Joe, I, I just want to, now, when you were walking up here, did you come across any more bob wire at the park in your, when you walked through the park? So I pulled out, when I lived here, I must have pulled out, I don't know how many square feet of, of bob wire, old bob wire that was buried, especially around Ed McWilliams property, whereabouts that, in the lower part, and even some of the higher parts. So I think somebody should take a look at that or find some of it, but I don't think we want people walking around there and all needing tetanus shots. Because of old bob wire, but there used to be, I still think there's quite a bit left. So.
Little bit there.
On, on the Williams side, on the McWilliams side and down low on McWilliams side. It's not there, and we're still going up to. There's still a lot there. There's still a lot there? Yeah. Okay. Keep in mind that some bob wire is sort of a historic, I, I understand the safety issue, but some bob wire is actually a boundary line or a reference that surveyors and people look for, so sometimes when you're taking stuff down, it seems like the right thing to do, but you're really taking away a historic document. And I don't know particularly that that was a historic document, but I do know a lot of times when they're running property nights, they're looking for old wire. Yeah. I took it primarily down where the ferry house weekend happened.
Okay, I guess we have a new agenda item, or you need to talk to the board, is that why you're here or you?
Will, I believe we do, but I.
I mean, not on the agenda, but I mean, if it's something serious, we can certainly deal with it.
This was a concern I had, when I looked at the agenda.
Is that okay, by the way, to do this?
Yeah. The last time I was here, I had said that we wanted to put on the town, on Town Warning, a, an item about having a Grafton School Advisory Committee. This would be a committee of the town and/or a committee of the board, and we provisionally crafted the language for it, but I wasn't sure if we needed to have an approval by you of that language, because it's being done not on petition basis, but as part of the warning, y'all in the warning. So that's why I came, wanted to make, wanted to make sure that I didn't miss an, dot an i or cross t.
It's on the agenda, I do believe, is Article 3. Shall members of the Grafton School Advisory Committee serve?
That's, that's the one.
Can I try and cut this?
Yes.
We're gonna, this is coming back to you, it's in the month.
Oh, I know.
Okay. I haven't passed this by Robin. This is presented here tonight, just so you guys can see what I'm saying, it's Robin.
Okay.
We don't have any idea. I don't know if this is our, first of all, I don't know if it's like what he wants, he's on the, on the warning, but the second thing is I don't know if they are, especially Article 3, I have no idea how to write Article 3, but, uh, so, so that's why, you know, I wouldn't spend a whole hell of a lot of time on because.
We, we, we can spend absolutely none, I just want to make sure that, that if, if you needed to have a vote on this tonight, that, that.
Okay.
That we're not sort of sending one by you, that was.
No, okay. No, we're not voting on this, this is just for. No, okay, no, we're not voting on this, this is just for informational purposes. I don't think Kim has finalized the, the warning anyway.
We're still, we're still finishing it up. It's probably ninety-five percent done, but we have to pass it by Robin, and we want to make sure all the figures are right, and we, and she usually has six people read it so they don't find where I misspelled Alex's name or something.
Right. So that would be terrible.
And there might be some other articles, so articles might be coming in from, we don't know about yet.
And they have until seventeen to bring in articles.
I have this committee, I have the select board in Westminster on the seventh, and I have the select board in Athens, and I just want to make sure that everybody sort of at least understands the idea here, which is that it's an attempt to make certain that each town has some basis for getting representation on the process, a decision-making process, and advisory committee right now would be an advisory committee of the town rather than the new district, because we don't, A, know if the district is even going to exist after the Supreme Court is done with it, we don't know what the status is, and this gives us a marker, and also, as I've said before, people may be interested in school governance, but they might not be interested in joint, you know, five hundred school board meetings a month, although if you are, I can know. But that, in the end, we should be a way of people familiarizing themselves with what is done and hopefully succeeding some of the incumbent members when it takes longer at some point in the future.
Okay, okay, is everybody okay with that? All right, thank you, Jack. And we will keep you in mind, and obviously Bill's right.
That's fine.
Robin has got to review the, and Kim, and they'll, you know, they might have to make some, but the audit, I don't think it's an issue of putting it in.
But I have, I have, I have literally, this is my third meeting today, so I wasn't sure, you know, what needed to be done, and it was kind enough to give me some time today, so...
Okay, all right, thank you. We need, we need to, Kim wants to do the pre-town meeting on the twenty-fourth, so if that's okay with everybody, but we all just, just have a motion to set that date as a pre-town meeting.
February twenty-fourth.
Yeah, February twenty-fourth.
What day is it?
What is the day?
Monday.
Monday.
And I will be at the school?
Yes.
At what time, six?
At six P M.
At six P M.
That's also agreeable with the high school. And just so that you guys know, except for this part of the morning that we just talked about, the school doesn't, we're not doing anything with the school's pre-meeting. All that will be done in April.
I am hoping that we'll have, wake the high school that would be able to depart to the issue at the pre-town meeting.
Pre-town meeting, yes.
I actually expect there'll be people from town, not towns, from Athens at the very least, and maybe even a drag alert here from Westminster, because it's one of the few places people get to hear an open discussion about the stuff ahead of time. And since I barely can figure out what we're doing, I suspect that there'll be a lot of folks who aren't quite sure what's going on, and should, we want to make certain that they do.
Okay.
So Jeff, you're talking about the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, the pre, in other words, how we present high school, just get gobble more of your time for two or three of them than this one.
I need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion to...
Make a motion. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor to have the pre-town meeting on February twenty-fourth at six P M at the school, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Jack, so the twenty-fourth. Okay, number eight, info on Otis Road, we're going to pass it. Something came of light that there might be a question on some of the boundaries that came to Bill's attention recently, so rather than discuss it, we're waiting for clarification to see if actually the roads do exist. So there's really no sense of discussion until that gets clarified. We have until February, what is it, Bill, twenty?
If we want to include them on this, until February twenty.
So hopefully we'll have the clarification by next meeting and we can discuss it or not discuss it, whatever the case might be.
Can I just make a quick...
Sure, go ahead.
So Marie and I were talking about that issue where the gate is located, and she was looking on the town webpage and all the maps that are there for Grafton on the town webpage. The one that has the school districts, thirteen, I think it is, school districts, and there's different colors for each school district, which I think is based off from the eighteen-sixty Beers Atlas map. If you look at that, that shows the roads that I was talking about and the location of the map that you sent us attachment with green and pink, was it?
Yeah.
Those roads are not the same, so that attachment you sent us, those marks are in a different location. And if you look at the map that you sent us, the map has a little squiggly line in a couple different places. That little squiggly line is a cartographer's symbol that means it continues beyond, and so it shows the town road with that little line in it, and that road obviously continues...
No, no, that squiggly line says one property goes to the other side of the property. The squiggly line has nothing to do with the road.
It's in the lot, it's...
I know, it has nothing to do with the road. It has to do with properties on each side of the road.
On each side.
On each side. But, but in any case, it's more complicated than that, okay, and there's no reason to discuss it until I have a surveyor with this one.
You have to have a true description, otherwise you can't deal with it, and now there's some question on the descriptions, so that until it's settled out, there's just no sense even dealing with it until we can get it. It might not even be a road, who knows?
Brought it up, I kind of wish I hadn't, but I actually prefer to have the gate stay there, so it's all right with me.
And so do a lot of people, so.
But I just figured the snowmobilers would bring it up if I didn't, so.
I just had, I've got a related comment, not specifically to roads that we want to keep on the map, just related to that, is I think we've got to give some thought, get back to the possibility of roads that we might want to take off a map. I mean, we do have, we talked about maybe a year ago or so, one road up by the town, up by Molly Meade Forest. We have a couple of roads that are just plowed and sanded that just go directly to somebody's garage because they were an old road, and that's all they're used for now, they're just driveways. And we've got one now that property is for sale. I think now would be a good time to deal with, with that and get that off, off our map. It's just a road that has to be plowed and sanded by the road, and all it is is a driveway to one specific house. We've got a couple of them in town, and I think we ought to rack our brains a little bit and make a list of the ones that at some point we have to, we should address, and either get them off our maintenance list, and we have one now that's on a property that's for sale. I think now would be a good time to address that.
All right, we can certainly put that on the agenda going forward, okay? Town Hall. We have the Wyndham Foundation gift for ten thousand dollars, we're going to put it, and future projects, and of course the heat pumps.
You want to do those in some sort of order?
Well, the Wyndham Foundation gift, I guess is the first one. I ran into her, Liz, in Townsend at the Riverbed Market, and she told me I got a surprise for you, to the board, that we gave you ten thousand dollars and it was to go for the handicap, and she said that, that once you guys get going, there could be another ten thousand dollars also coming for that project.
Talking second floor access.
Yeah, so I don't know where that stands, she's not long going to be there, whether the new C E O is going to do that or not, but anyway, that was the purpose for the handicap access. So the question is, what do you do with the funds, I guess? Do you want to segregate them? How do you want to handle them?
Well, I think if those funds in particular, if they were, if it was stated that that's what it was for, I think that has to be put aside and used for specific purpose.
But do you want to put it where it can't be touched, or do you want to put it where the next board could come in and override that and use it for something else?
There was only intent.
Well, again, I think...
Well, you never know.
But if the intent was for the handicap access, it should stay handicap access.
Right, but once the money goes into the general treasury, you know, it's not like, it's not like we have the roads where we have it designated for the Walker Bridge and we have it for the, for the town hall restoration, it's just going to go into that fund, and, you know, if it's not used in the next...
Why does it have to go in the general?
Well, that's the point, that's why we're having a discussion, Kathy, how do you want to handle the funds? Bill?
If you look on the articles, in case you decide you want to isolate them like we've done other funds in the last couple of years, look at Article twenty-one and twenty-two. If you want to do that, we can leave those on the articles to vote, be voted on, and that'll be, it'd be, the fund will be created for the handicap access and funds given for that purpose will be put in that fund.
And any other donations that come that go into that fund. I'm not saying that, I'm not opposed, I'm saying we have to make a decision if that's how you want to handle it.
Yep. Because that's going to be a very expensive project, I mean, I don't, I've never got involved with putting in very many elevators, but I would imagine that you've got to be in the probably the fifty, fifty thousand dollar range by the time you're done.
More like seventy.
Well, I just, yeah, oh, sure.
But we're hoping that the Ames Hold is going to come along and fund all of it or most of it, yes?
Jeff Martell's doing figures for me. Jeff Martell's an architect, and this is what he's done in his professional life, and I just mentioned to him when he was over at my house one day that we wanted to do this, and two days later he showed up with drawings, and he knows the elevator people, so he said, "I'll give you the, I'll get you, you know, rough drawings and a figure for how much it's going to cost, and he can do that for me before the end of the month so that I can then ask Ames Hold for the money." So, I mean, and that's what I am intending to do. So it's, it's, he has an idea of what he wants to do, and I think it's a really good idea, and that is rebuild the stairs and put the elevator in that same area where the stairs are. And, and he just needs to know the sizes, because he needs to look those up, the code sizes, and talk to the elevator people, and if you put it there, then it wouldn't be, that building, there's a whole bunch of reasons that's a really good place for it, including the height of it, and he said you could put the thing in and it would probably be somewhere around fifty. If we're doing this everything, it'd probably be around fifty, but he's going to give me the numbers.
I think to show respect to the gift we have from the Wyndham Foundation and the idea of the article which allows the voters to also express their opinion or vote of confidence, I don't see where we have any choice but what, to proceed as suggested in the article. And let the voters decide, we should do that, and that money, if it takes twenty years to generate enough money, it takes twenty years, but...
Oh, I agree.
The foundation, that was their intent, and I think that starts the ball rolling.
I think that's why it was on there, but we still have to have a motion to agree.
I make that motion.
Right, okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion, other discussion, honey?
Well, I think it's important, if you're going to put it in an article and also if anybody else is going to match that money, it helps the Ames Hold grant, and those grants are coming out, and they're due in October of this year.
Oh, I agree, Kathy, and there might be other, there might be other sources too that might want to, you know, fund that project. Foundations or other individuals.
Correct. And Kim said that, that if we could then vote there, there might be some state money for handicap access.
Yeah, right. For elections. She said to Chip and Kathy tonight that because you're voting in the building, instead of voting outside the building, there might be some money from the state for that as well, so there might be other funds that we can certainly attack. So anyway, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's, that's the first part of it, and then...
Now, is there, just to go back to the very first one, thanks to the Wyndham Foundation, is there a letter to be sent or something to that effect?
That's the next thing, we haven't done anything, do you want to send some letter?
I think there should be.
I think there should.
And assure them that it'll be put in a fund to go towards that specific...
All right, so do you have the objection if Bill writes the letter and I sign it? Or do you want all of us to sign it? I don't care, doesn't matter.
As long as it comes from the board, I don't...
Just do it, okay? All right, so we'll get a letter.
I think it would be appropriate in the letter to let them know that we've put this art, or intend to put this article on the warning.
Yes, I agree.
So they can see what we're going to do.
Yes, I agree. The heat pumps, I guess we really can't discuss because of, unless you want to move this to executive session, but because of the bidding process...
But I do want to make a couple of comments.
We can talk general heat pump discussion, but not specific moment, correct?
Yep, I've got a couple of comments, I actually talked to...
Coleman.
Bob Coleman?
Yeah, Bob.
I think it's Coleman, I don't know if it's...
I'm not sure, I can't read his signature, but anyway, I did talk to him, and he actually handed this to me, and I said, "Well, other than the overall cost, this doesn't tell me really anything." I mean, the electric service has got to be upgraded to do these things, there's twelve additional circuits, or fourteen, I think, additional circuits that's needed to have these individual units put in. I mean, we're talking about upgrading the service, you know, where are they going to be mounted, are they going to be mounted in pedestals? They have to be off the back of the building, not on the side, so I asked him to send me additional paperwork, I wanted to know what the percentage of oil that would be saved by going to these heat pumps, but I also wanted to know what was the percentage of electrical increase that we were going to get by putting in the heat pumps, the electrical work that was going to be needed, the location of the outside units, and I haven't got anything back from him relating to any of those questions. The other thing that bothers me in particular is I wanted to compare what it would be to put in a new boiler. Now, the boiler that's in there now is thirty-eight years old or something like that. Thirty-seven, thirty-eight years old, thirty-two actually, it's thirty-two years old. And I had looked initially of just replacing a boiler with a more updated, you know, low volume type of boiler, so I called James, our heating company, twice with absolutely no response. I would have thought that gee, the ten, twelve thousand, maybe fifteen thousand dollar job, people would be interested in actually doing it. I called them twice, absolutely, some of the get back to you, I have not heard a single word from them. So I think we may be at a point of, maybe they can deliver fuel nicely, but maybe we ought to start thinking about bidding out fuel prices if they're not interested in doing the work.
It's very strange that they would not come back.
Absolutely nothing.
I know, I know, I use Coda for my personal home, and if I need to do a project, they're Johnny on the spot with the price, I mean, you know, I just can't imagine the company not wanting to do business.
Yeah, how do you call that?
I've had some experience with this, because being street art systems, and actually had my daughter put in a system, and we're probably going to do something for the elementary schools with these heat pumps. People that tend to do that tend to, that's what they do, they're really very narrowly-focused specialists, and the same folks you see at Trelawny, Big Lock, Beattie Taylor, the same ones that do it for institutions as well. It tends not to be something that your general contractor does. If you're looking for really the lowdown on it, I've contacted, me and Peter Artz were contacting Margaret O'Gia, who's kind of working at, whatever it is, Wyndham County Environmental, something or other, I'm trying to use her contacts, and she can count a lot...
something or other, I'm trying to view her contacts, and she can kind of walk you through the, the whole process and the trade-offs, because MSA was an old building too, and we went through a lot of the same stuff, and we were, we saved a bucket load of my, whatever that's worth.
Well, the original, the original thing that we've got for these heat pumps was from an installer, he was not a G C. This is what his work was, and then the oil company that I called, that's what they do, so it was two very specific people, they weren't G Cs, that had to, you know, go around and talk to, these were very specific people that do that work.
We put in a heat pump at our house, we have one heat pump, we burned 1,000 gallons of oil on the average before we did that, and for the last three years, we're down in the 750 range, so we're saving about 200 to 250 gallons of oil a year at our house.
No, I have, I have no doubt.
We added some electricity, because basically, from our solar generation, we were generating credits, which they wouldn't pay us for, so we put in a heat pump, and now we use up the credit, so it's a, was an economical thing for us. So I'm sure that they could figure that out.
Oh, yeah, but my only point with that was, I've already asked him for those figures, and he's never, never come back, so.
The other concern we have with whatever we go with, heat pumps or new furnace, you've got insulation problems, you've got water down in that cellar, and you're just throwing your money away if you don't fix that part.
That's where, I mean, we've got other, we've got other issues that in fact, we should deal with, I mean, we still have water down in that, in the basement, and a dirt floor, you know, under a space where we're all concerned about records and, you know, being hurt by humidity and things like that.
Also radon.
And the radon, which we couldn't take care of, if we, all we got to do is cover up the, you know, put a plastic membrane, impervial membrane on the floor, spray the walls, so we're trying to get, Kathy and I met a week or so ago, to try to get a thought process of where we want to be with our next steps with, with the building. And, and please don't get me wrong, I think the idea of the handicap thing, it's a great idea, but I think we have more, bigger and better projects to take care of before we get to that point, you know, actually take care of the building first before we start adding the other things. So we'll have to sit down, and I've asked Bill to see if there was any, any kind of renovation money, of grants available from the state of historical preservation and things.
They're all done, it's next year.
So we're, we're working in that direction.
Alan?
I looked up some of the grants.
Alan? Hardy? When you installed, well, you didn't, but when you hired yours installed, the actual heat pump is outside the building?
Yeah.
So what, inside the, inside the building, all you really have is a thing that dissipates the heat, right?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be in the basement?
No.
It's one...
So it's away from the water that's in the basement. The other question I have for you, Hardy, is have you had your system long enough to know, yep, there's some more electricity required to run the heat pump, but when your oil burner's not running, there's some electricity you save from the oil burner not running, and, and so there's a savings there too. So how has your electrical demand changed? You told us how your oil consumption changed.
Well, electrical demand utilized up all the credits that we were generating, and on the top of my head, I can't tell you exactly what that is, but it's definitely calculable, and an installer can figure that out for you.
Yeah, but Hardy, you had credits, so if, if an individual doesn't have any credits, is, what is the, what is the increase of the...
So in other words, we had excess kilowatt hours, which we have now used up.
Right.
So basically, what we've used up is the cost in electricity to us.
Right, but I don't have, I don't have it, so I would have to pay more electricity, so there's savings of fuel, but there is a increase, and where, what, you know, what is the real saving? That's the thing that you have to look...
Well, that's, that's what I wanted to get from them, is what's the percentage of fuel that's gonna be saved, and what's the percentage of increase in electricity that's going to be consumed? So where do you fall within those, you know, are you saving?
I have, I have one heat pump in my house, and basically, it's propane, and I can tell you that when the heat pumps go on, my electric bill goes up, and I can't tell you what my, but there is certainly a correlation, so you're not, it's not 100% savings, the question is what is the electric versus the propane?
Takes electricity to run it.
Yeah, it takes electricity to run it, and what is the payback?
But there's definitely a savings, I know that.
If it's really cold, I mean, minus degrees, it's still efficient.
Yes, it works.
These are the 15 below.
Yeah, ours goes down to 20 below, but it doesn't get to 20 below anymore.
I never heard 20.
Years and years it used to.
Yeah, it doesn't anymore.
H B is in the company.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we did it through H B.
Just trigger.
Yep.
There are a lot of companies out there that do this sort of stuff.
Well, this guy was, just has to be doing some work for somebody else that works in the town hall, so while he was doing it, he came down and looked at this all sorts of stuff.
So are you and Kathy gonna have some kind of, I guess, recommendation about what's the next step for the town hall?
Yeah.
Well, that, this could be included with that, and why don't you just, you know, handle that and...
Well, I want to hear back.
Well, of course, I mean, but rather than the full board dealing with it, you deal with it.
Oh, absolutely.
And let him give you the real numbers.
Absolutely, yep.
Anything else on the town hall that we need to talk about? Okay, we need to, that's an executive session, so actually, we're done, unless there's...
Public comment.
Public comment? Any public comment? Okay, yes, Bill?
There's a meeting tomorrow night.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, remember, there's a, there's a hearing tomorrow, 6 o'clock at the school, for the voting for the town plan.
What's the format for that, Joe?
There is no format, as far as I understand it, it's a requirement by law, so the select board calls it, and then anybody could, could speak for or against it.
Who answers questions?
Well, I would hope that the planning commission would be there, because we had, we've already addressed the plan, we're done, we approved it, so if, if they don't like it, or they like it, I would expect the planning commission to defend it, that's, that's how I look at it, definitely.
If there's some questions on the law, I'll be there.
Yeah, I mean, they're concerned, they ask any of it, any of us, what are, how we feel, or whatever, but we can't, we've already approved the plan, and so as far as we're concerned, it's okay. Now, if somebody doesn't like it, they have to, the planning commission should be the one to defend it, they, they wrote it.
That's a 6 o'clock meeting, we have 5:45 for a P C A meeting.
Yeah, we have a P C A meeting, 5:45, for us, yes. So there is no format, it's just a, it's, it's for the public to ask questions, that's it.
Yeah, the agenda simply says, open the meeting, public comments, those meetings, that's it.
Run by the select board.
Run by the, yeah, Joe's probably gonna run.
Yeah, by law, we have to do that, it's a requirement by law.
Well, it's not like the planning commission, we had a hearing back in 18 on town planning.
Right, but this is not...
Some did.
This is not a hearing, this is basically just a, for the voters to ask questions.
All it is, that's all it was for P C A. Informational meeting.
It's like your informational meeting...
Yeah.
Before town meeting.
Exactly.
Because you're doing Australian bow.
Right. So if the planning commission wants the plan approved, they should be able to be there to answer the questions, I mean, that's how I look at it.
Everybody who wants to speak can speak.
While we're talking meetings...
Yes, sir.
I want to bring to people's attention, if you didn't happen to read it in the shopper, Thursday night, the 9th, in Londonberry, from 6:30 to 8:30, there's a meeting on Emerald Ashborough, there'll be some, the county forester will be there, Sam Shineski, and some folks from University of Vermont, so, it's at, it's at Londonberry at their town hall, which is in South Londonberry.
Any other public comment? If not, we need a motion to enter executive session.
So...
Now, do you, because we're talking about the Trump, do you want to invite Hardy in for that, or is that...
I would invite Hardy and Kathy both to that part.
Yeah, okay, and then we'll...
Do that first.
Yeah, okay, and then we don't, okay, is that okay with you guys, you can stay for that?
Okay.
Thank you for coming, everybody.